I think she's gonna be here. It seems like you're further out.
No, I don't. Cherry just pointed that out.
Drop that call there.
But she showed up.
It's kind of a patient for you.
Yeah. From five years ago.
Pretty much year after year after year.
Yeah.
I think it's also, I think it's also another recent thing that happens when you're with Callard sick.
Oh, yeah. Well, she's done it too, so don't give her no.
Don't give her, don't give her.
Don't take too much shit.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January eighth Board of Education meeting. Uh, thank you all for joining us for our first board meeting of the new calendar year. Um, at this time, if you do plan to make a public comment, please, uh, complete a comment card and get it to Mrs. Thomas at this time, if you've not already done so. I would ask that you silence your cell phones and remove your hats as we stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we do the roll call, please?
Here.
Sherri Luck? Present. David Haney? Brooke Hanson? Present. Jared Montague?
Present.
Steve Murphy?
Present.
Katie Odell?
Present.
Tabitha Ramberg?
Present.
All right, thank you very much, and Mr. Haney did notify us in advance that he had a personal conflict this evening, and Mrs. Thomas is graciously filling in as a reporting secretary this evening as Mrs. Callard is out, so we wish her the best in her recovery as well. Um, first and foremost this evening, we have to, um, do our oath of office for our newly elected board members. Um, this year we have two newly elected board members, Katie Odell and Tabitha Ramberg. Welcome to both of you, and if you will, please stand and read aloud the oath of office, um, that you have provided there in front of you.
I, Tabitha Ramberg, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of Linden Community Schools, Michigan, according to the best of my ability.
I, Katie Odell, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this State, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of Linden Community Schools, Michigan, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you, thank you to both of you, and welcome again to the board. Uh, first up this evening, we do need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved, supported.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Um, and just as a point of interest and reminder as well for new board members, um, if you can kind of raise your hand when you're voting, that helps the recording secretary, um, especially since Mrs. Thomas is filling in this evening and not used to our procedures as, as much, so appreciate that. Um, first up this evening, we have to appoint the recording secretary for the year, and it is the administrative recommendation to once again appoint Mrs. Michelle Callard as our recording secretary for the 2025, uh, calendar year. Do I have a motion?
So moved, supported.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Michelle Callard as the recording secretary for the 2025 calendar year. All of those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up is to appoint our treasurer. Um, it is, the treasurer is the Chief Financial Officer of the district. Um, at this time, that responsibility lies with the Director of Business Services, and it is rec- the recommendation of the administration to appoint, um, Mrs. Kylie Rush as the treasurer for the 2025 calendar year. Um, with the administrative recommendation to appoint Kylie Rush as the administrator to assume specific responsibilities of treasurer for the 2025 calendar year. Do I have a motion?
So moved, supported.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Kylie Rush as the administrator to assume specified responsibilities of the treasurer for the 2025 calendar year per board policy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, I guess as I'm getting into this, I should note for our public that's here this evening, and specifically for our students, the first, uh, school board meeting of the calendar year is what we call our organizational meeting, so this is the meeting where we have to appoint officers, um, elect board roles, and other, um, administrative duties at the board for the calendar year, so if, if it seems a little bit weird to you, it's because it is a little bit weird up front, um, but that's what we'll be doing here before we get into our main agenda this evening. All right, um, per bylaw zero one five two, we do need to now elect our Board of Education officers for the 2025 calendar year. Um, the board shall elect a president and vice president, as well as a secretary and treasurer. Election of officers shall be by a majority of the full board, where no such majority exists, on the first ballot vote, a second vote shall be cast for the two candidates who receive the greatest number of ballot votes. Except for those appointed to fill a vacancy, officers shall serve for one year until their respective successors are elected and shall qualify. Um, the only way an officer can be removed, um, from their board role is by a full majority vote of the board. Um, the board shall fill a vacancy in either office within twenty days of the occurrence of the vacancy, so that's just our policy language for our officer elections. Uh, first up this evening, we will, um, I will call for nominations for the Office of President. Are there any nominations for the Office of President?
I nominate Sherri Luck for the Office of President.
Brooke Hanson nominates Sherri Luck for the Office of the President of the Board of Education. Are there any other nominations for the Office of the President?
I nominate Steve Murphy.
Tabitha Ramberg nominates Steve Murphy for the Office of President, Board of Education. Are there any other nominations for the Office of President? Are there any other nominations for Office of the President? All right. Seeing no further nominations, uh, first, there's a nomination for Sherri Luck for the Office of President. All of those in favor? Aye. Four. Uh, there's another nomination for Steve Murphy for the Office of President, all of those in favor? Four to two, I, I mean, I guess we could do the opposed as well, but I imagine it would be opposite. Can you please do a roll call vote on that as well? So with the nomination of four to two, uh, Sherri Luck is named as the president with the majority vote. Up next, I will call for nominations for Office of Vice President. Are there any nominations for the Office of the Vice President? I will nominate Jared Montague as Office of the Vice President. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Vice President? All right, seeing no other nominations for Office of Vice President, uh, there's a nomination for Jared Montague for the Office of the Vice President, all of those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That would be six to nothing. So with that vote, uh, Jared Montague is named as Vice President with the majority vote. All right, up next, what is our role of treasurer? Um, I will call for nominations for Office of Treasurer, are there any nominations for Office of Treasurer?
I nominate David Haney for Treasurer.
Hanson nominates David Haney for Office of Treasurer, Board of Education. Are there any other nominations for Office of Treasurer? Any other nominations for Office of Treasurer? Okay, so there's a nomination for David Haney for Office of Treasurer, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Oh, vote as well, um, and then with that, uh, David Haney is named as Treasurer with the majority vote. All right, next is our role of secretary, I will now call for nominations for Office of Secretary, are there any nominations for Office of Secretary?
I nominate Brooke Hanson for Office of Secretary.
Jared Montague nominates Brooke Hanson for Office of Secretary, Board of Education. Are there any other nominations for Office of Secretary?
I nominate Steve Murphy for Office of Secretary.
Okay, Steve Murphy, nominate Steve Murphy for Office of Secretary. Is there any other nominations for Office of Secretary? Any other nominations? All right, seeing none, we will now call for a vote. Uh, there's a nomination for Brooke Hanson for Office of Secretary, all of those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Okay. Um, there's another nomination for Office of Secretary for Steve Murphy, all of those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed. So that's a four to two vote for Brooke Hanson, so Brooke Hanson will be named as Secretary with the majority vote. All right, with that, I don't think we need to move any seats this evening, but I will, I will hand over this lovely placard to my colleague here.
How about that?
Mr. Montague. All right, now the weirdest part of the board meeting is over, and we will move along to our reports and announcements this evening. Uh, first up, as usual, is the superintendent, Russ.
Well, thank you and welcome, everybody. Uh, Happy New Year and welcome back to school. Uh, students and staff came back on, uh, on Monday, so, uh, and today actually was a half day for students. During the second half of the day, our instructional staff uses time for professional development on balanced assessment systems with a focus on learning targets and success criteria. Uh, on the PD, um, we have another professional development day that's going to occur on January twentieth. Students will not be in school, as this is another PD day for staff, the focus of the PD will remain with the balanced assessment system, this time with a focus on formative assessments. And just a reminder that the end of our first semester ends on Friday, January the seventeenth. End of semester information, including, uh, the LHS exam schedules can be found on our school's websites.
Perfect, thank you, Russ. Um, are there any board members with reports this evening? This is Story, thank you very much, and we apologize for excluding the student board report off the agenda, so thank you for being here.
That's okay. Um, so during lunch tonight, just, um, like Mr. Sosowski had said, that, um, the semester's about to wrap up this next coming week, and with the exam schedule, I'm going to kind of explain a little bit about it, but like you said, it can be found. Um, so, um, let me look where I was, okay, so there's a review period that starts like either beginning of the year, like kind of midday, and it's, um, it's an hour and twenty minutes, and then there's a break that's fifteen minutes just in between it, and then that's when you take the exam, and it's an hour and a half, so you get the review period, the break, and then the exam. And, and then I was going to say that Friday night is the basketball team's hoop for hope, to, uh, raise money for Elle who, um, has cancer at Central, um, all money, again, will just go to her, like, I think past years we had done, um, we'd done the fundraiser at Kennyville, it was for, well, I think we can, and so now we're doing it for, um, Elle this year. Um, the varsity girls' basketball won last night, and then the boys did lose, it was sports creek, um, and then, uh, the girl soccer coach is actually looking, they're looking for a coach right now, so if anyone here is interested, or if you know anybody that would be interested, um, definitely, I don't know, Mr. Nigby, who would they talk to? Yeah, Mr. Gleason. Um, and then the wrestling is currently twenty-one and oh, so, um, Cohen wanted me to mention that tonight. Um, we are still looking for service opportunities at NHS, if anyone has anything that I can talk about, um, next Tuesday at our meeting. And then at the middle school, uh, the, I looked at the last meeting, the winter sport season two's kind of starting, um, well, just started, uh, s- uh, sixth grade boys' basketball and, uh, competitive cheer. Um, so Friday, December nineteenth, there's supposed to be, um, a, a field trip, and it got moved, um, to, it's like, it was Sky Zone, and it's now January twenty-fourth. Um, and then Melissa Boyer has been selected as the teacher of the month for, um, London Middle School, and Tabitha will have her chance.
Perfect, thank you very much. Uh, any other board members with reports this evening? Yeah, it's been a little bit quiet for us since the, uh, holiday, the holiday break, so, um, again, just, uh, to everyone who's here, uh, wishing you all a Happy New Year, and hopefully just we have a good second half of the school year, um, to match the good first half of the school year we've had, so. Uh, we do not have any special presentations or recognitions this evening, there are no administrative updates this evening, are there any public comments?
Yes, we do have, um, Colleen Lewandowski here for a comment.
Okay. Yeah, just as a reminder, uh, you have, uh, three minutes for your public comment, and your comments should be directed to the board president, um, either myself or Mr. Sosowski will respond, um, if necessary before or at the next board meeting.
Should be a green light on top of that for you.
Yep, it is.
Might have to bend.
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
It probably bends down a little bit, maybe?
There you go. Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Um, as Mr. Sosowski argued, I, I emailed him regarding this issue, it has to do with taking sessions, and the fact that it's still not open, like, I did get some information, um, so thank you for emailing me back quickly, um, so, besides that, I just want to know when they're going to start the construction, I know that the site plan was approved, um, by GNC, so I'm just wondering when they're going to start construction on that, and hopefully be able to, you know, open for basketball before basketball season's over with. We're, are losing a lot of money, like, course of sports, not having concessions hurt us greatly this year, by hundreds of dollars. Secondly, cash, can we move to a cashless school, like, most of the other schools that are around us are cashless, it would make things a lot easier as far as not having all of that money and having to be responsible for getting it there and having it collected, and, you know, it's just, it's, it is a lot of work to, to nagle people, who are you going to find, they'll lock it up, who's taking it home, who's going to make sure it's getting there before the next game, the home game, so if we could go to cashless, and I know the boosters pay for that money, so I don't know if it's a booster's question or if it's a board question, or a little bit of both, so if you could just find that out and get back, and I would just recommend that you go cashless, because a lot of schools are doing that, and it's great, if you have a pay or something like that.
Thank you, Mr. Sosowski, you want to ask a clarifying question?
On, on the cashless paid comment, are you talking strictly athletics, or are you talking the entire district in general?
Athletics, at least.
Okay.
You know, for games, paying for tickets, paying for concessions, it would be great to have some, you know, because there's a lot of times people, it looks like they're even got cash on them, and then they, you know, they go away sad because they're hungry, so if you could just look into that, that would be great. Thank you very much for everything. Up.
Any other public comments this evening? Okay. Uh, so we'll watch the consent agenda, um, it is the administrative recommendation to approve the consent agenda as presented, which includes only of our minutes, minutes from the regular meeting from December eighteenth. Do I have a motion?
So moved, supported.
Been moved and supported to approve the consent agenda as presented, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Uh, action items this evening, uh, we need to establish compensation for board members, um, as some of you who are returning board members are aware, um, the board under general powers may establish a reasonable rate of compensation, but shall receive not more than thirty dollars per meeting up to a total of not more than fifty-two meetings per year. Um, last year, the board voted to receive thirty dollars per meeting not to exceed six hundred dollars in the calendar year, and individual board members may opt out of receiving compensation. Um, it is the administrative recommendation that the board establishes appropriate compensation for this year, um, so I guess, is there any motions on this topic?
I move to support the administrative recommendation.
Okay, um.
To establish the thirty dollars per meeting not to exceed six hundred dollars in the calendar year.
Okay, so there's a motion to establish compensation to board members of thirty dollars per meeting up to a total not to, and not more than six hundred dollars, um, for the meetings in the twenty-twenty-five year, um, do I have support for that? Okay, it's been moved and supported, um, any discussion on this, Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I'd like to allow for amendment of the motion as presented, to allow for to opt out board members, it's not included in the language, I think, in the actual opening of the meeting suggesting in motion, but there's no opt out, so, can't see your hand with a board member when I push him on the board, she called a board member late at eleven, I can't track it any better, so I'm not going to be interested in supporting this if I have to. It's not way to read right now, kind of.
Okay, so you're making a motion to, um, establish compensation, to, to amend that motion, to establish compensation for board members of thirty dollars per meeting up to a total of not more than six hundred dollars, um, for fifty-two meetings, um, for the twenty-twenty-five calendar year, with the, um, ability for individual board members to opt out of receiving compensation.
Correct, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
I cannot support that as part of the discussion, uh, Mr. Murphy's been at this point many years, and I agree with him that that is a good option to have, uh, but I do know that some other board members, from what they've said, have chosen to possibly donate that money
Right.
to a, a, a school booster program of their choice, and I, I think that's a good use of money as well.
Correct, yeah. All right, so there is, um, uh, the amended motion and support to establish compensation to board members at thirty dollars per meeting up to a total of not more than six hundred dollars, um, for fifty-two meetings for the twenty-twenty-five calendar year, um, with the ability for individual board members to opt out of receiving compensation, do you have that, Mrs. Thomas? Okay, sorry, we made it a little bit muddy for you. Um, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, um, motion carries. All right, up next is, um, to, um, vote on, uh, Tabitha Ramberg and Jared Montague both would like to attend the CBA one-on-one, which is Fundamentals of School Board Service on January thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Um, both Mrs. Ramberg and Mr. Montague have, um, expressed interest in attending this, um, CBA, which is a full-day, um, fundamental school board service on January thirtieth, it's being hosted at, in Fenton, so that's nice. Um, do I have a motion in support to approve Tabitha Ramberg and Jared Montague's attendance at CBA one-on-one?
Some moved, some moved.
That's correct, okay. It's been moved and seconded, are there any comments or questions, Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I think it's, uh, one hundred series, I think the debate class is, uh, to become one hundred certified, something I just, a year ago, but, uh, I think it's useful based on joining this board. There's also a class for Mr. Montague now that he's going to be Vice President, revealed as being the President, even though he's not President, so that's an official class that I was suggesting.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Murphy.
Any other comments or discussion? All right, so, um, it's been moved and seconded to approve Tabitha Ramberg and Jared Montague's attendance at CBA one-on-one, all of those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, up next here, we have our bond authorization resolution sale for Series Three bonds, um, and I know we've had a lot of information to review in advance of this, um, it is the administrative recommendation to approve the bond authorizing resolution sale of Series Three bonds, do I have a motion?
Some moved.
And I will support that, so it's been moved and supported to approve bond authorizing resolution sales of Series Three bonds. Um, is there, are there questions, discussion, or Mr. Sosowski, do you have anything you'd like to add, or?
Uh, again, this is, uh, would allow us, the resolution would put us on track to sell our Series Three bond, which is, uh, not to exceed seventeen million, which is the remainder of the fifty-five million dollar bond that was supported by our community, uh, again, for the Series Three work, that would primarily be, uh, Central Elementary, uh, Hyatt Elementary, uh, and then Middle School. So again, as you see by the timelines, uh, getting this resolution passed today puts us on track for a competitive bid sale, which would take place, I believe, on February sixth. Uh, we've been through the process, uh, cash would be on hand, uh, March third, I believe.
Any questions or comments from board members?
Yeah, I'll just say quickly that I think the other, the other rounds that we've done have gone very smoothly, and, and, and ended up in our favor, so I'm, I'm comfortable that we have a, a good solid process around it, and that the, the partners that we're working with are, are, uh, know what they're doing here, and that they, they're interested in giving us the kind of best deal that we can for selling the bonds to get the rest of this project wrapped up.
Yeah, and with a competitive bid sale, it just gives more options.
Yeah.
Uh, whether it be individuals, theoretically, to, you know, big financial institutions, uh, that have the opportunity, uh, to buy the bonds.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion in support to approve the bond authorization resolution sale of Series Three bonds, all of those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have a couple of discussion items this evening, uh, so we won't be voting on these things tonight, but just some things to get on our radar. Um, first is the, uh, GNC County Association of School Board Members representative and alternate for the twenty-twenty-five year. Um, each year, our local school boards need to appoint a GCAS BM representative for an alternate, and an alternate to attend the monthly meetings at the GISD, uh, for the twenty-twenty-four calendar year, uh, Mr. Montague served as our representative, and Mrs. Hanson served as our alternate. Um, the board will need to take action on this at the meeting, uh, on January twenty-second, so I guess I just wanted to throw it out there in case anybody's interested or wants more clarifying information, or wants to throw their name out there as a, um, a person of interest to, uh, take one of these roles.
If Jared's willing to give it up, I'd be willing to be the primary person, Jared.
That's fine with me, and I'd be willing to be the alternate unless, uh, somebody else would like to do it, so.
I'll be the turn alternate, that's what it was this past year, I think, which we don't actually hold on, but that's perfect. Uh, anybody else interested in this role? Any other questions or discussion on this role?
I'd just say, I found it, I found it to be, you know, if anyone else is interested, I, I found it to be helpful, this is a gathering of, of school board members from other GNC County schools is, is the title, and, and I think that what I, what I picked up from it is, they, there's a lot of discussion that happens in terms of just how we can possibly be more consistent across the county, and one of the things that they talked about in the last meeting I attended was, uh, a more kind of a focused best practice sharing, and, you know, it sounds like now that we've kind of gotten through some of the real, you know, hot topics of the moment, now we can start to lean our focus more on how we can maybe commonize and choose the best things from the schools, and I know Mr. Sosowski has told me that there's a superintendent's group that kind of feeds this group, and that is one of the focus items for you here, so it'll be, it'll be fun to see what kind of things come from those, and learn what schools are doing differently, maybe any of those that we might be able to bring to that, and so it should be good here.
All right, we will move along to our second discussion item this evening, which is our Safe Routes to School, uh, for Hyatt Elementary and the city of Linden, and I think, um, Mr. Bede has a little presentation that Mr. Sosowski's pulling up here, I know, um, we've had the opportunity to kind of take a look at the information and the route, um, but we'll turn it over to Greg.
Yeah, this was a project that's, I don't know, been in, in the works of planning probably for the last ten or fifteen years, um, Safe Routes to Schools is a, is a, a way and a means to try and provide safe sidewalks for kids to walk, uh, to get to the schools throughout state Michigan. Okay. Um, so the city finalized, uh, this project with MDOT, and they got funding through Safe Routes to Schools and other sources, and, uh, due to the project, uh, kind of being in, adjacent to our campus, they want to utilize some of the sidewalks that are pre-existing, uh, that go through Hyatt Elementary School. So they approached us maybe three weeks ago, um, because they need some easements from us in order to provide to the state Michigan, uh, utilizing three locations, one of them is, is a crossing, uh, that comes across the bus driveway, secondly, they're going to come up, uh, you can kind of see them here, the section's in red, um, the one on the far left, kind of towards the top, is a, a small section that's going to cross the bus driveway, and it's not in the right of way, so they need easement from the school district in order to be able to, to build that. Um, the second one is kind of the more L-shaped section that ties into the sidewalk that's up near the front of the building, that again will come across our property, and it heads out towards the right of way, so as the red stops and you don't see anything further, it's because the sidewalk is actually on, on property that's owned by the city in the right of way, and then when it comes down to, uh, Bridge Street, there's another small section that they need easement from the district in order to complete the project. I'm sure the set, if you go back to one screen, Russ, um, that is the path in its entirety, it starts basically from where the, the new sidewalk is near Taco Bell, uh, comes down Hyatt, uh, go up through the school property, and then it comes down, uh, Stan Eaton, and it ties back into the sidewalk closest to the road. So, uh, they basically value the property that they're asking us to ease, uh, give them easement to at around, I think it's point seven hundred. So they basically value the property that they're asking us to ease, give them easement to at around, I think it's twenty-seven hundred. And then we basically give that back to them as an in-kind donation to make this project happen. I gave all the documentation that we got from the city, including the easements that the engineers put together. So tonight, we're just asking the board to basically support the efforts of the city and allow this project to, to go through. I don't see it being any negative impact. We already have walkways that come from Bridge Street all the way through our property, down along the, the bus route. This is a standalone project, it's not occurring with any roadwork, so they're not planning at this time to tie it into, you know, a, a road destruction project on Hyatt or anything like that. It's just going to be just the sidewalks, and the city does intend to do this project this coming summer. So any questions that you may have?
Thank you very much. I just want to kind of, I think probably most of us fully support this, because we've seen how great it's been for the other part of the pathway that's come through our high school, middle school campus, and how many people get a lot of use out of it. So it would be really nice to have this opportunity for the path to continue on through Linden like this. I guess the only quick question I have, when you said about this summer, is you don't anticipate there's any conflict with other construction that we have going on in that area?
I don't, really the only section that may have some impact on us is when they cross the driveway.
Yeah.
But it doesn't sound as though the driveway itself be impacted, they'll be cutting curbs and doing those kinds of things as primary easement itself. So they won't be rebuilding our road, so it shouldn't have any impact on us getting in or out.
Perfect, very good. Mr. Murphy, do you guys have anything?
Yeah, just, you know, my, my only concern about these pathways are, it's not so much with this one, because the location of our playgrounds, with the bus loop, track, it's not possible, it's, where's street, go down, that's along the bus path, and then you push up, up by Hyatt, or by, that's, during the day, I don't want to see any traffic here. I talked to Mr. Sosolski about it, and it's hard to see the traffic because of the proximity of the playgrounds. And Mr. Sosolski told me that Linden actually has an ordinance that prohibits people from utilizing that part of the pathway. So that really, a lot of my concern about that, and our resource officer, Karen, does have against that, towards that. So this particular additional path will be really outside any playground area. I do have a little concern that people are going to understand that when we release students at the end of the day, that section across the front of Hyatt is now will continue to be a very resistant spot. So if they're trying to walk, utilize our path to get from Linden Road over to, you know, the market, cutting through that path, it's going to, it's going to cover, make a couple, a bit of traffic there that time of day. I know it's only a fifteen-minute period a day, but that's my only real concern. There's other options probably, but yeah, for some, I mean, I've worked them, just dressed up one small, find that issue, so. I do see a lot of people down there walking alongside, and so I think that's going to be a great tool to do a lot of, and a little safer passage to kind of be handed stuff, walking of animals and stuff, so. Obviously, it'd be a good deal for the history and community to kind of spread all down down there, to say, walk, keep it alive. Yep, that's it, thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question. Is it also going to be where it's not motorized and the rest of the pathways, you can't use, general public?
That is the intent, yes. They're all non-motorized paths. It's really a continuation of city sidewalks. This isn't really part of truly the pathway project, even though this is the route that they looked at, you know, incorporating that pathway going through. It's something that stands alone from that, and that further connection or tie-in for the pathway probably is something that'll happen later. I don't know that it'll have any impact on this, you know, once it's completed, though. And the, the, as our officer does a fine job of making sure that our properties are not being occupied during the school day by people. So he's there every day, and people have found that they take other routes to walk dogs and such, just to try and keep them off our property as much as possible.
Any more questions or comments? Alright, seeing none, this will go on as a consent agenda item at our January twenty-second meeting.
We actually don't even, we're not even really asking for board approval, and it's really more putting this in front of the board. Just, this is something that Russ can sign and get the easement back to the city, so it doesn't, we don't need formal approval from the board, but we thought you should know, and we wanted to at least bring it in front of you, and get your, you know, at least have you acknowledge it.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Alright, well, that was our last discussion item this evening, so with that, at six-thirty-four, your turn. Any students that are here for class, you can come up and any one of us can sign.